Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held September 18, 2018 at 6:00 PM. First order of business is a roll call. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Altouse.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Hoggie.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Alinsky.
Here, thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. I am pleased to say that we have many representatives from troops 7022 and 7043 from the area to lead the pledge with us today. So I'd like to ask all the Boy Scouts, please to stand up. We're going to be led this evening by Connor Cluff. I believe you all are here tonight to get your merit badge, is that correct? Can you let us know which merit badge it is that you're here to receive?
We are working on both the communication merit badge and the citizenship and community merit badge.
Fantastic. Well, thanks for being here tonight. And Connor, if you'd like to, Mr. Cluff, you can come up and lead from the podium.
All right. You want a hand on your heart, Scout salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Happy to see so many future leaders in the council chambers tonight. Thanks for being here. I was a scout myself. In Payson. All right. Up next is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Any council members have anything to share tonight? Councilmember Pfeiffer?
The Chamber of Commerce had the head of the Arizona Office of Tourism here last night, and we had a really good meeting at Blazenem explaining just how much, and I'm not even going to go into the details, of how much money that tourism brings into our community and all the good that it does here. So to have the head of Office of Tourism here in Cottonwood, Arizona, was a big deal last night.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yes, please.
Of course, we had Thunder Valley Rally this last weekend, and I sat on the committee representing City Council and also representing Modified Motorcycle Association. We haven't had a wrap-up meeting, obviously, we're all still recovering from this weekend, so I'll have, you know, better information. But we had a great turnout. Vice Mayor Kyla and I were honored to be able to thank everybody and go up on stage both nights, and it's quite a different perspective when you're up on stage looking out at all the people, and wow, we really had a lot of visitors into Cottonwood this weekend. And then on Thursday, we had what we call Little Bikers Program, which this year we expanded it, and we were able to talk to about 125 first and second graders, talk to them about motorcycle safety and awareness. Were any of you boys there?
No.
No. Bummer. Were you there?
I have a friend up close, and I saw them.
All right. And so one of the little boys has a friend that was there. And, you know, we got to talk to them about looking for motorcycles, and it was just a great event. The kids were so excited, and from what I understand, are still talking about that. It's a wonderful experience with our future bikers here in Cottonwood. That's it.
Good. Any other council members? Go ahead, please.
Okay. Two weeks ago, I attended a presentation by Martha Cohn. She's a Holocaust survivor, one of the few that we still have left on this planet, and she wrote the book Behind Enemy Lines. She's about four foot nothing, and she played as a spy in Germany for the Jews, and it was a pretty remarkable story that she had to give us. Attended Patriots' Day, which many of our council members attended Patriots' Day, that's 9/11, at different locations. Mine was at the Veterans of Foreign War. We watched the flag raised and then lower. I know Tosca was at, were you at the fire department? Somebody went to the fire department.
I went to the APFW with you.
And then we each went to different things to honor the 9/11 event. We have two ribbon cuttings this week, so stop by these new stores or relocated stores. One's called Find It Here, which is at 148 South Main. It's a specialty gift store, have great things in there. And then Hooked on Books moved from that location to a new location at the Main Place Plaza, just across the street from there. Karen Pfeffer, Linda Norman, and myself attended the fire department badge printing, where they're promotions of two officers and hiring of two more officers, and it was wonderful. And I also was at TVR, of course, had a blast. It was so much fun, and everybody was polite and happy and just having a good time. And I also participated by volunteering at the Military Service Park booth to get donations and things for a little while while I was there. So that's it.
Good. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to speak.
Okay. All right, and we move on then to Call to the Public, and this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is unofficially listed on the agenda, and comments are limited to a five-minute period. I have two forms received for Call to the Public, and if there's anyone here tonight who would like to address the council, they're yellow forms in the back, if you would, please fill them out, and you can address the council. So on this first one, there's not a name, but when I received the form, there's only one gentleman in the room at the time, Mr. Al Filardo. Did you want to address the council? Did you submit this form?
The subject is?
The subject is Technical Training in the Verde Valley.
It's mine, Mayor.
All right.
Sorry, I forgot my name.
That's okay.
It happens very often.
I'm going to fill your name out, if you don't mind. Good evening, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Let me get my proper lenses on, so I know how to see, so I can see you.
Tim, could you repeat the name, please?
If you would introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Mayor Alinsky, Vice Mayor Kayla Allen, council members and members of staff. My name is Al Filardo, I am from Clarkdale. By trade, I am an electrical engineer, but I'm also a professor at Arizona State University, retired. I am an organizational behavior expert, and I'm also a process improvement expert. I have three items to speak to you about. The first one is, first of all, to tell you how much I appreciate what you do. And to some folks, this is going to sound funny, but I'm probably the only one in this room that have worked extensively and done business in a communist country. So when you all talk about increasing the sales tax, and you engage the public, and you talk about pros and cons, let me tell you, a lot of people will laugh at this, but I'm inspired. I'm also trained to look for holes, to look for defects, as we say in our business. And just about the time when I think we all have a good process in the Verde Valley, indicators come up that wakes me up, and that's the second item that I want to bring up to you. A lady named Carrie Olson sent in a note to the editor of Verde Independent, and she said, "I've been paying property taxes to Yabapai College now for 40 years. Why in the world do they continuously raise taxes in our neck of the woods and provide less services? We need to do something about their mismanagement of funds. Please, can we all get together?" Problem number one, who's "we"? The process, when it comes to raising taxes from the college, is not very good. Okay? Here's another one that will shock you, maybe. An article written by Mr. Oliveon in the Sedona vis. It says, "According to Yabapai County Tax Assessor Judge Simmons, East County taxpayers provide 30 percent of the taxes used to fund Yabapai College. According to the audited financial statement in the community college, 30 percent of the total budget for the 2016-2017 school year equals $22,993,000. Recent analysis of these financial statements suggests the college is returning about $9 million to us." And here's my third point. For years, business owners, the Yabapai Apache Nation, the Verde Valley Board Advisory Committee, the Verde Valley Forum for Public Affairs, citizen advocates tells us that we need training here. It's a main economic driver. $12 million is not getting us much. We don't have much training, but I can tell you what works. They almost sold the Sedona Center. What happened is the mayor, Rob Adams, and Moriarity, the council, and the community got involved. Now there's more involvement. Camp Verde has got a focus. They have a person assigned to deal directly with Yabapai College. Bill Ragnar, our council member in Clarkdale, is heavily involved. So, I know that you attended Mayor's forum. We've had literally hundreds of forums that's saying the same thing, but we get not much for our money. So I'm calling out Cottonwood. I'm calling you all out to get involved, because I know what works. Sedona got involved, and look at the facilities now that the college almost sold. It is now refurbished, they now have a parking lot that they never had before, and we have programs that are going on there. So come on, Cottonwood, either appoint someone, an individual, appoint a committee, I work for free. So if you want me to help you, I'd be more than willing to do that. Please get involved, because it'll happen. It's been too long, and it's too much money leaving our county, our area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Filardo. Okay, up next, we have Mr. Paul Chevalier. I'm sorry if I butchered your name, sir.
You said it first.
Did I?
Yeah.
It's coming from a Polack, too, so that's not too bad. All right. Enough of that. So, thanks for being here. You are here to talk about Yabapai College.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council and the audience, firstly, I have to tell you, I was a Boy Scout. I was an Eagle Scout. I was a camp captain. I'm so proud here to be with Boy Scouts today. But I came here not to give a campaign speech. I came here to kind of follow up on what Al was saying. If I'm elected to the City Council, one of the things I want to do is I want to get very involved with each community in District Three. If you appoint somebody or you have some other way that I can interface with you, I would really, really like that, because Yabapai College is a great college, but it's not so great over here. I mean, we are, a lot of things we need here, like a CTE, we actually need more academic education, we need much better marketing, but I don't have all the answers. And one of the things I've learned in life is, you try to come up with a good idea, and then you listen around, somebody has a better idea, and you jump to that. Somebody else has a better idea, and you jump to that, and you know that you've never come up with the best idea yet. So I would like to engage you, and I'm going to say the same thing to the other city councils and town councils and superintendents. I want to get you all engaged. I want to be able to come here comfortably from time to time and talk to the whole council, but in the meantime, if you can select someone to be the interface and as you come up with ideas, I'd very much like to work with you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Are there any other folks here tonight that would like to address the council? Okay. And we'll move on then to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 4, 2018, and special meeting of September 11, 2018. I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Are approved. And we move on then to the consent agenda, and the following items are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And tonight, we have 10 items on the consent agenda, so I'll read them all out. If there's any item that a member of the council or public would like pooled, just please indicate so. Item one is Resolution Number 2965, Appointing Scott Anderson a Member of the Cottonwood Board of Adjustment. Item two is Resolution Number 2966, Reappointing Vernon Reed, a Member of the Cottonwood Airport Commission, and Establishing His Term of Office. Item three is Resolution Number 2967, Appointing Joyce Oswald, a Member of the City's Personnel Board. Item four is Acceptance of a Trail Easement from Clementsaw Townsite LLC for the Del Monte Wash Trail. Item five is Acceptance of a Trail Easement from Beaver Creek Development Company and BV Farms, Inc., for the Del Monte Wash Trail. Item six is Acceptance of a Navigation Easement over the Inspiration at Cottonwood Apartment Complex. Item seven is Change Order for Pima Paving, Inc., for the Cottonwood Street Sidewalk Project. Item eight is Community Agency Funding Agreement with the Old Town Center for the Arts. Item nine is Funding Agreement with the Verde Valley Senior Citizens Association. Item 10 is Renewal of Contract with Donald E. Zelachovsky, CPA, for TPT auditing services. Is there any item that a member of the public would like to have pooled? A member of the council?
Yes, I'd like to pool the fiscal year 2019 funding agreement at the Verde Valley Senior Center. I just have a question, so we need to pull it.
Okay, that is item...
Nine.
Or nine, thank you. Okay, so if we could then, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item nine.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion to approve. Vice Mayor Allen seconded it. I forget how we do this. Do we do roll call?
Yeah.
Deputy Clerk, please take roll call vote.
Councilmember Altouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoggie.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
And the motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And if you would, please, Deputy Clerk, read Resolution Number 2965, 2966, and 2967 by title only.
Resolution Number 2965, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, Appointing Scott Anderson, a Member of the Board of Adjustment, and Establishing His Term of Office. And Resolution Number 2966, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yabapai County, Arizona, Appointing Vernon Reed, a Member of the Cottonwood Airport Commission, and Establishing His Term of Office. And Resolution Number 2967, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, Appointing Joyce Oswald, a Member of the City's Personnel Board, and Establishing Her Term of Office. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And congratulations to our new board and commission members. Okay, item nine is Funding Agreement with the Verde Valley Senior Citizens Association. Would that fall on your shoulders there, Mr. Rodriguez, or?
Or Jeff Cooks.
Mayor Council, I'm Rudy Rodriguez, under the Dippy City Manager for the City of Cottonwood.
I apologize, Rudy, I just have one question. I've kind of dismantled my studio at home, and I couldn't find my old budget to just compare this myself, and I didn't have time to give you a call. Is $55,000 the same amount as we approved last year? It didn't go up or down any, right?
It's the same amount, yes.
That's the only question that I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I move to approve, do you mind, Mayor?
No, please.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 funding agreement with the Verde Valley Senior Center Citizens Association.
Jeff, yeah?
Okay, we had Vice Mayor Allen make the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it, and roll call vote again. Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember Altouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoggie.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to new business, and first item of business is Resolution Number 2963, Declaring That Certain Document Titled City of Cottonwood Engineering Design Standards Manual to be a Public Record. And I'm hoping somebody's here to present it.
They had to flip the coin.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Reverend, what do you see, engineer? What we have before you tonight, we brought to you back in August, at the work session, was the Engineering Design Standards Manual. We're continuing to develop that as we go forward, and we have a resolution tonight to make this a public document, so we can look at actually adopting it as an ordinance on this next item coming up.
Okay. Then I would see no reason not to approve Resolution Number 2963.
Was that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Altouse seconded it. Deputy Clerk, please take roll call vote.
Councilmember Altouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoggie.
Yes.
Councilmember Norman.
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
And the motion carried.
Okay, Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2963 by title only.
Resolution Number 2963, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yabapai County, Arizona, declaring that a certain document titled City of Cottonwood Engineering Design Standards Manual to be a public record. Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Next item is Ordinance Number 650, which is adopting the Cottonwood Engineering Design Standards Manual. This is the first reading. Is there anything that you'd like to share? You have to make it very engaging for the Boy Scouts in the rooms.
I'm going to just make it brief. It's kind of a dry document, because it's what you have to do to do development inside the city. Since I brought it to you back in August, we made some minor tweaks under Article Number Seven, basically changing some of the wording for classifications of streets. And then we changed the procedure for appeals under Article Number 10. We had referenced in there a position that isn't currently authorized under the city code, or something to that effect. It was referring to a public works director, we don't have that position right now.
Okay.
So we changed that to be city engineer.
Okay.
And those are the changes that have been made at this point.
Okay. We did go over this at great length, and I haven't heard any feedback, positive or negative, from the community or the builders or development community in the area, but like most ordinances, it's a living document.
Right.
Any changes are needed in the future, we can certainly redress those.
Exactly, yeah. As construction practices change, or different techniques come up, we'll evaluate them and put them into the standards if they are deemed appropriate.
Okay. All right, well, this is just a first reading, so there's no action tonight. Any questions from council or community on this item?
No.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next item is item three. I am so sorry. Deputy Clerk, please read Ordinance Number 650 by title only.
Ordinance Number 650, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, Appointing the Certain Document Titled Cottonwood Engineering Design Standards Manual. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, up next is a proposed mural and directional signage on the north side of the City Hall building. Evening.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Alinsky, members of the council. My name is Jim Paget, Community Development Planner. We were approached by Casey Rooney regarding some additional signage that might be needed on the north side of the administration building across the street. There is a public restroom there, and a lot of people, employees, business owners downtown, people that come to downtown are not even aware that that restroom is there. So rather than just put "Mens and Women" sign on the doors, and Casey sort of proposed that we come up with a mural, something that was a little bit more artistic for the city. It would be a 72-square-foot mural on the north side of the administration building. This is the location where the mural portion would be. I'll grab it for you here in a minute. This has been presented to both the Planning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission. They were both very enthusiastic with seeing an artistic endeavor in town, and like I said, not just men's and women's painted on the wall somewhere. One comment that we did receive was that this, what would appear to be a sidewalk here, when the actual painting occurs, that it looked more like a river scene, that the river going through the winery. So that may be the only change that would be, once you're actually looking at the sign. So the mural portion would be right here. On this larger wall right here, which is visible from Main Street, this is a sign that would be seen from Main Street. Then above the women's, or on this, I'm sorry, on the side of the women's door here, and on the men's door, there would be, where that light was, there would be the women's and men's identification marker. This is from across the street, looking at where the sign would be, the mural sort of hidden back in between this, the trees, the men sign the women there. And the public restroom sign would be back around on the side of the building here, where you can't see in this picture, it would be right there. Looking across the street, this is what you see. So there's, you know, already murals in the community. I think they generally receive warm reception. So having one more downtown has been looked at favorably by the Commission and Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission. The artist is here this evening, Marilyn Constantine, if you have any questions of her. Also Casey Rooney, since he's the one that sort of brought this forward to community development staff is here as well. Is available for any questions?
Very good. Do we have any questions for Mr. Paget?
No, thank you.
Would, Mr. Rooney, or Ms. Constantine, is that correct? Would you care to present to council?
Casey? Come on.
You know, what I've noticed in the 12 years that I've been here is, I talk to a lot of people in Old Town practically every day, and there's always people looking for restrooms. And they have a hard time, I mean, it's right there across the street, pretty visible in my mind, but people that come to our town, they don't see it. So it's going to be, it's going to be something that's going to be tastefully done, put together by Marilyn, and she's done quite a bit of this, and we're very concerned about, we don't want something tacky up on the side of our walls. And she came along, and I believe that what she's going to put on that wall is going to be very professional, very artistic, and very tasteful for our community. So I'm in favor of it. I think it's going to be very nice, and it's not huge, you know, it's not as big as what you see across the street on Red Rooster, but it's going to be very well done. So I don't know if you wanted to say anything. I'm in favor, and I want to see it happen, so.
Very good.
I'm Marilyn Constantine, and thank you for having me here tonight. As Casey described, I do good work, and I drew it up to scale and color and so on. The one suggestion I had from the Historic Society was to make the road coming down look like the river, which was a good suggestion, and I have no problem with that. The, I've done mural work, like Casey said, since 99. I was published for the first one I ever did, and I've been busy ever since. I tried to do a good job, so unless you guys have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Okay, I love what I do. I just, I enjoy it.
Yeah, and I also want to mention that if you want to see her artwork, you can go down to the Old Town Jail. It's on the front of the Old Town Jail. And also, we've got our walls in the Business Assistance Center, have all of her, lots of her artwork on the walls right now, just paintings. So it looks beautiful. I really like it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So, questions?
I don't have any questions, just one thing I was thinking of is, as you're at the Activity Park, I think it'd be nice, too, to have some signage that would indicate that that's a public restroom. It didn't look like, from what Mr. Paget showed us, that that would be clearly indicated as well as it is from Main Street. Because I know a lot of folks that go to the market would like to know, too, where the restrooms are. Would it be possible to, can you seize?
Are you suggesting perhaps on?
Yes.
I mean, I understand, we're, you know, I don't know if you're getting paid for this, but as long as you're volunteering your labor and everything.
She is being paid for it, and that makes a lot of sense, to put something on that side of the wall. We just never even thought about that, but I was mostly concerned with people walking down Main Street, and, you know, they never know where the restrooms are.
Sure. Sure, sure.
If there's not an issue with the signage amount, we could very easily take some of the space off the front. I went to the maximum amount on the application for the signage on the front of the building with the idea in mind, it wouldn't have to go all the way through the review system if it grew an inch. This way, it can always shrink a little bit, so we could take some of that signage space and move it around to the back, and maybe keep the cost from going up, Casey.
Yeah, and I also wanna mention that the CDC is paying, the Cottonwood Economic Development Council's paying for this. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was, can you go back to the wall across the street on the, yeah, right there? That mural has been here as long as I've been here, and I've been here almost twelve years. It's starting to fall apart. It's getting to the point where it's detracting from, you know, the interest in our community. So, I just wanted to mention that somewhere along the way, I think we're gonna have to address that. And I don't think, the owner of the building doesn't seem to be very interested in doing it, but I'd be willing to jump in and lead the charge and get that redone. Originally, when I was talking to Shane, the owner of the business, he said he wanted to paint that whole wall black. And I'm not necessarily against that, but we need to do something, it's just starting to fall apart.
A lot of complaints around town in the section.
All right, so, that was just a suggestion, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but.
So, was that a suggestion that we amend our?
No, no, today, I would like to just proceed with the project that we got approved.
Right.
Or we think we got approved. And then I'd like to look at the backside of our administration building and come up with another proposal, unless you say, go ahead and do it, you know, we'll go ahead and do it. I'm not thinking of anything very big, it wouldn't be very, I mean, be right there on that wall, and that makes sense to be there. It's up to you, if you want us to proceed with that, we'll proceed with it. I do wanna just at least take care of this end of the administration building, get that done, and we can do other things as well. It's up to you.
If it's the council's preference to put something on the back, we can go ahead and, and follow that direction without having to come back to the council again.
Okay.
Certainly be part of your motion.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 2923, declaring Section 408. Wait, am I at the right spot? No, I'm not at the right spot, I apologize. If somebody else is at the spot, can you go ahead and make a motion? Because I can't find it.
I think we just need to move to approve the proposed mural and directional.
Okay, move to approve the proposed mural and directional signage on the north side of the City Hall building, including the addition that we requested on the rear side of the City Hall building.
Okay. So, what we're probably gonna be looking at is from that downspout over, just put something very tasteful in there that people can see from, from the back. We'll get, get started on it.
We can lay that out when I come back this week.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Fantastic. So, the vice mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it, and if we could, please have deputy clerk take roll call vote.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeifer? Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Alinsky?
Yes. Motion's approved, thanks to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Item Four, Resolution Number 2923, declaring Section 408 Outdoor Lighting Code of the City's zoning ordinance as a public record. Evening.
Mayor Alinsky, and council members, this is Bayron Najad, Community Development Manager, and 2923 is declaring Section 408 Outdoor Lighting Code of the City's zoning ordinance as a public record.
All right. I would move to approve Resolution Number 2923.
Second.
Isn't this sort of, oh, I'm sorry, nevermind.
Okay, so, mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it, and deputy clerk, please take roll call vote.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Vice, or Councilmember Pfeifer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And the motion passed.
Okay, and deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 2923 by title only.
Resolution Number 2923, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring that certain document entitled "Section 408 Outdoor Lighting Code" to be a public record.
Okay, it's public record, so let's talk about it.
All right.
Ordinance Number 635, which is amending the city's zoning ordinance by deleting Section 408 Outdoor Lighting Code in its entirety and adding a new Section 408 Outdoor Lighting, first reading.
As you remember, you heard this item twice in December, and council had two concerns about the existing ordinance that time. One of them was sunset provision, which was for ten years. And second concern was existing non-conforming signage. So, staff did some research on that, and we changed the existing code, and July ten, we came for a work session and explained what we did, and IDA, International Dark Sky Association, is okay with our changes, and you did not have any problem that time either. So, we haven't done any changes, and this is ready to go. As you know, just recently, Camp Burdy was awarded with this designation, and they are the sixth city in Arizona, and I'm, don't quote me on that, but fifteenth, I guess, overall in the world, so it's not that many, so we are looking forward to be the seventh city in Arizona to be designated with dark skies designation.
That's great. So, I, I don't, again, we discussed this ad nauseam, and I don't think there's any further discussion to be had here unless council member has any questions, member of the public has any questions? Okay, first reading, so we'll bring it back again, I believe, in October?
October's second hearing.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy clerk, please read Resolution, or excuse me, Ordinance Number 635 by title only, thanks.
Ordinance Number 635, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city's zoning ordinance by deleting Section 408 Outdoor Lighting Code in its entirety and adding a new Section 408 Outdoor Lighting. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Up next, Item Six, Ordinance Number 646, amending the city's zoning ordinance to allow RV parks as a condition, as conditional uses in the GA, which is General Agricultural, CF, which is Community Facility, AR-43, which is Agricultural Residential, and AR-70, Agricultural Residential Zones, first reading. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Scott Ellis with Community Development. This is a requested text amendment, as mentioned, for Sections 410, 411, 423, and 425, to allow RV parks as a conditional use. Currently, RV parks are defined in the ordinance, however, they're not listed as any use in any of the zones. We do allow campgrounds as conditional uses in every zone here, except for the CF Zone. However, given the nature of the CF Zone and the uses there, we figured RV parks would be a good fit. So, what we're looking to do on this is just to add RV parks as conditional uses in the same zones that campgrounds are in. Any questions?
Any questions from council on this? Does seem to, to make sense, is there something predicated this, just housekeeping?
Yeah.
Housekeeping?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, great. No, it seems to make, make sense to me. Is there anybody out in the public tonight that'd like to comment on this? No, okay. It's first reading, so we'll bring it back again. So, there's no action taken tonight, so I would just move, or no, never mind, we move on. But we would have deputy clerk read Ordinance Number 646 by title only.
Ordinance Number 646, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Sections 410, GA Zone, General Agricultural, C, Conditional Uses, 411, AR-43 Zone, Agricultural Residential, C, Conditional Uses, 423, CF Zone, Community Facility, C, Conditional Uses, and 425, AR-70 Zone, Agricultural Residential, C, Conditional Uses. Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks. Up next, Item Seven, Ordinance Number 648, amending the city's zoning ordinance by amending Sections 417, MH Zone, Manufactured Home, D, Property Development Standards for Manufactured Home Subdivisions, Six, Minimum Front Yard, A, and 417, MH Zone, Manufactured Home, E, Property Development Standards for Manufactured Home Parks, Six, Minimum Front Yard, B, first reading.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Again, this one's more of a housekeeping item. There's some confusion in the MH Zone. It was enacted after most of the parks were in place already in the city. There's just some wording confusion on what setbacks are imposed for carports versus garages, where that measurement is taken from, and where it ends. So, this just kinda clarifies it, not only for citizens, but for staff, so there's not always questions on different proposals.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, none? Okay. All right, again, it's just first reading, so there's no action taken, but I would ask the deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 648 by title only, or ordinance, excuse me.
Ordinance Number 648, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance by amending Sections 417, MH Zone, Manufactured Home, D, Property Development Standards for Manufactured Home Subdivisions, Six, Minimum Front Yard, A, and 417, MH Zone, Manufactured Home, E, Property Development Standards for Manufactured Home Parks, Six, Minimum Front Yard, E. Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Next is Item Eight, Ordinance Number 649, amending the city's zoning ordinance by amending Article Two, Definitions, by adding a new definition, Lot Corner, in Section 404, General Provisions, Six, Swimming Pools and Detached Accessory Buildings, C, Detached Accessory Buildings and Residential Zones, One, this is the first reading.
One more time, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. There's zoning ordinance text amendments, we don't have a definition for corner lots in the ordinance. We do define every other type of lot, so we figured it's best to put this in, to clarify, just so we have that fallback on. Also, to restrict accessory buildings being placed on those corner lots, so they're not right there on the street side, visible from, you know, passing motorists, citizens walking. Instead, they have to be placed further back away from the street to help keep that clean. Because essentially, when you have a corner lot, you really have two frontages, two front yards is how it's normally looked at.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Questions on that one?
Any questions?
Has this been an issue? I mean, what kind of problems have we?
It, it has. We get people coming in wanting to put all sorts of stuff on the corners that just encroach more so than what it should, what other interior lots would be allowed to have. Interior lots on detached accessory building have to be in the backyard, they're completely screened, you can't see them. This is just something that's not visible from the street, so to keep it clean and make it so corner lots don't get to do whatever they want and be shown to everybody, this kind of helps restrict that.
So, some corner lots also have less rear yard, just because of the layout on, on the property and how the lot lines are? Do we have a mechanism for them to be able to work with you to be able to have a site structure approved?
Yeah, we always look at how we can accommodate that, sometimes if they make it in attached part of the house, that works. It, it's very site-specific on, on what they're proposing, what they're looking to do. But we always try to figure out a way to let them do something.
So, you don't relax any of the rear yard setbacks? You just look for other alternatives?
No, that hasn't really, that hasn't really been an issue on the rear yard setbacks. You can go up to, if, if it's under eight feet in height, you can go up to five feet from the rear setback, so.
Okay.
I know we've had issues with people wanting to put their pools in the side yard, which is actually the front yard, things like that, so this gives us a little bit more teeth.
Right.
And ability to work with them. Thank you.
Okay, again, this is first reading, so thanks for presenting. Any other questions from council or members of the public? All right, then I'd ask deputy clerk, please read, read, read Ordinance Number 649 by title only.
Ordinance Number 649, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city's zoning ordinance by amending Article Two, Definitions, by adding a new definition, Lot Corner, and Section 404, General Provisions, Six, Swimming Pools and Detached Accessory Buildings, C, Detached Accessory Buildings and Residential Zones, One. Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ellis. Okay, next up is Item Nine, which is a request to reclassify one part-time Cottonwood Area Transit System driver position to a full-time position. Mr. Morrow, evening.
Mr. Mayor, council, Bruce Morrow, Transportation Manager for the city. We, we've kinda gotten into a situation that was totally unplanned for and could not have foreseen. I have currently two of my full-time drivers on medical leave for an indefinite amount of time. I have a third that's on vacation, I have two others that need to go on vacation because they've reached the max of their accrual for vacation time. I'm in a situation where I don't have enough part-time drivers to cover even eighty hours of full-time people being gone. I now have a hundred and twenty hours to cover, and it's not one. So, what we're asking to do is add basically another full-time position to supplement what we already have. That would give us ten full-time equivalents, and that would help considerably. Right now, with the part-time help, only being allowed nineteen point seven five hours a week, I, I just don't have enough part-timers to cover all that, so that's why we're requesting this change.
Okay. Can you tell us how this impacts the budget?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, council, it really, it.
Sorry.
Mayor, council, it really doesn't affect the budget. All we're into is reallocate resources from, from one section of the budget to the other, it will still remain the same.
Okay, great. Any questions from council?
It makes sense, I mean, we have to, we have, people really rely on our transportation system, so I, I can make a motion?
Please.
I move to authorize the reclassification of one part-time Cottonwood Area Transit System driver position to a full-time benefit eligible position.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it, deputy clerk?
I just have a quick question, though, for discussion, so, because as part of the cost funding source, it does say rider fares, we're not contemplating increasing our fares at this time, correct?
We are not contemplating increasing our fares at this time.
Okay, no, no other questions?
Okay. And deputy clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And the motion passed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Okay, last item on the agenda is, well, it's not the last item, but of new business, we'll be here for much, much longer. Resolution Number 2968, declaring and adopting the results of the city's primary election held on August twenty-eighth, twenty-eight.
Need to declare conflict?
Okay.
I'm assuming? No, I'm good?
Sorry?
You're canvassing the votes, and I'm one of the people that are canvassing. Do I need to declare a conflict, or am I good?
You're good.
Okay.
All right, so, again, the results of the city's primary election held on August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
This is just declaring the results of the election. We had, where are the results? There were three candidates elected outright, there were Vice Mayor Allen, Doug Hulse, and Michael Matthews.
All right. I just wanna say thanks to Cottonwood for coming out in full force during an off-cycle election. It was great to see so many people come out and vote, so thanks to Cottonwood.
Want a motion?
Please.
I move to accept the final results of the city's August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen primary election, as submitted by the Yavapai County Elections Department, and approve Resolution Number 2968, declaring and adopting the results of the election.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Althouse made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Deputy clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And the motion passed.
Unfortunately, nobody got elected with a name that's closer alphabetically than Althouse's, so you'll still be called first on every roll call vote.
That's okay.
He's used to it by now, right?
Yeah, he's used to it.
You're used to it by now.
I am.
All right, deputy clerk, please read Resolution Number 2968 by title only. All right, deputy clerk, please read resolution number 2968 by title only.
Resolution number 2968, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 28, 2018. Mr. Mayor.
Very good, and congratulations to Mr. Hulse, Mr. Matthews, and Vice Mayor Allen for winning that election.
I move we convene into executive session?
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we move on then to item 10, which is proposed settlement with Valley Concrete Materials pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, sections 38-431.03.8.3. And four, the council may vote to convene in executive session to consider this matter.
I move we convene into executive session?
Okay, I'll second that. So Vice Mayor made the motion, Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or do we do a roll call vote on that? We do, don't we? Okay, roll call vote, please, deputy clerk.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
I have to abstain. I have a conflict of interest.
You can declare it now.
I declare the conflict of interest.
Councilmember Howagie?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes. So folks in the audience, this is the confusing part of the meeting, where we're going to go in the back room and meet in executive session. So you're welcome to stay, but there's really no reason for you to. We're going to be back there for a long time, and for all intents and purposes, the public portion of this meeting is over, and thanks very much for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, board. Great job.
Okay, so we did.
I don't think so yet. Tosca?
Got a motion to make still.
I'm sorry, legal action on the settlement.
Right.
Ms. Henry can sit wherever she wants.
Oh.
Right, so we did discuss this in executive session. I would like to make a motion that we approve the proposed settlement agreement with Valley Concrete Materials, subject to the approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney. Should I go ahead and list the amount?
Sure.
The amount of $10,000.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion and Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it. Deputy Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howery?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, very good. So that's done and we have another item here, item 11. Approval of proposed consent order with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, sections 38-4, 31.03, point A, point three, and four. Council may vote to convene an executive session to consider this matter, and I would so move.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Pfeiffer seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Althouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Howery?
Yes.
Councilmember Norman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
So again, I'd ask Mr. Rodriguez to come in and Councilmember Lect Matthews.
Okay, again we're here to discuss the possible approval of a proposed consent order with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Did have a lengthy discussion, executive session,